All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, September 6th. We will call this meeting to order. We would ask that folks who are with us, if you are both willing to able and able to ride for the invocation, rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, that invocation will be delivered by Pastor Jeff Gagnon of Chapel Hill United Methodist. I believe he's joining us through Zoom.
Let us pray. We give you thanks and praise, O Lord, our God, for the gift, for the beauty of this day that you have made. We pray that you would help us to rejoice and to be glad in it. We give thanks for these elected officials who are willing to give of their time and talent in this way. We pray your blessing upon them, that you would grant them the gift of wisdom, that their deliberations and their decisions would glorify you and would serve the common good of this community we love. For we surrender this meeting to you. In your most holy name, we pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one God, and peaceful, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2022.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Proclamation, National Literacy Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for National Literacy Month, please make your way towards the front. And the way proclamations work is if you're taking a picture, you can use all this space up here. You're not going to bother me. All right. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the mission of Storytime Village Incorporated with the support of parents and the community is to inspire a lifelong love of reading for underserved Kansas children from birth to age eight. And whereas, National Literacy Month is a time to encourage young people to pick up a book, explore new worlds, and engage in learning to help them see how schools, communities, and the world beyond are connected. And whereas, the Kansas Children's Literacy Festival addresses the vital need for literacy enrichment through targeted festival programs, events, and activities that encourage early learning, family engagement around reading, and access to books. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2022 as National Literacy Month. In the city of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to support efforts that increase public awareness around children's literacy issues, provide early literacy education, and increase support for children who are not reading at grade level. This includes joining Storytime Village as the Kansas Literacy Festival, September 8th through the 10th, with the culmination event being Hoops for Literacy that will feature NBA legend Shaquille O'Neal on Saturday, September 10th, at Coke Arena.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the Storytime Village Board of Directors, our staff and team, we are grateful for this proclamation. Storytime Village's mission is to inspire a lifelong love of reading for underserved Kansas children from birth to age eight. And we are extremely excited, this National Literacy Month, to celebrate with the Kansas Literacy Festival and Hoops for Literacy. So thank you so much for this recognition, and we encourage the entire community to join us in celebrating National Literacy Month.
Madam Clerk?
Drug Abuse and Mental Health Awareness Day.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Drug Abuse and Mental Health Awareness Day, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the Associated General Contractors of Kansas, the Chamber of Commerce for the Kansas Construction Industry, representing 300 Kansas commercial, industrial, and utility construction contractors and their 19,000 employees. And whereas, the AGC of Kansas is proud to partner with the public and private sectors to recognize the month of September as Drug Abuse and National Suicide Prevention slash Health Awareness Month. And whereas, the AGC of Kansas and its partners have created the Kansas Construction Safety Network to provide resources associated with drug abuse and mental health, and to bring attention to the critical challenges associated with drug abuse and mental health in the community. And whereas, the AGC of Kansas has worked with its 300 Kansas construction firms to hold a construction stand-up on their construction job sites across Kansas to recognize Drug Abuse and Suicide Prevention slash Mental Health Month. And now, therefore be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 7th, 2022, as Drug Abuse and Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. We really appreciate your leadership. I do want to recognize some of our task force. Mr. Lashley with Higgins Group, Mr. Del Torre with McCown Gordon Construction, and Mr. Ingrenkay is with Hutton Construction. They, along with our partners, OSHA, the Kansas Mental Health Association, and the city of Wichita, felt like with the challenges that we've seen over the last two years, dealing with the post-COVID era, there's been a really increase, four to five increase times on drug abuse and also mental health challenges. And we felt like, because the construction industry touches everybody's life from the moment you get up in the morning, I know the first thing that most of you did was turn on a light switch or click on a coffee maker. The construction industry made that happen. Well, we feel like the construction industry is going to make this happen in bringing attention to these huge challenges regarding mental health and drug abuse. We've created a website. We would encourage the public to visit that website, www.kasconstruction safetynetwork.com. There's a wide range of resources that are on there that you can use, not only for your family, but friends, and also your businesses. And tomorrow at 11:30, we invite the public to come down to the Plaza in Old Town Wichita, where there will be a press conference announcing this initiative. The mayor stated, we're going to hold a, we're not calling it a stand down, we're calling it a stand-up. Every one of our construction job sites are being encouraged tomorrow at noon to have a recognition ceremony with their employees to bring attention to drug abuse and mental health. So this is going to be a statewide initiative, but it all starts here in Wichita. And because the leadership of Mayor Whipple and the city council, this has become reality. So thank you, Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Awards, Purchasing's Achievement of Excellence Award.
All right. If you're here to receive the Purchasing Excellence Award, please make your way to the front. The Purchasing Division in the Finance Department has been awarded for the 27th Annual Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 2022. This award is from the National Procurement Institute. This important award is earned by organizations that demonstrate excellence in procurement. For 2022, only 73 cities in the United States receive this award, and in Kansas, only three agencies, including our Finance Department, receive this award. The award is based on the evaluation of the Purchasing Division using a set of rigorous criteria. The award recognizes departments that demonstrate innovation, professionalism, productivity, e-procurement, and follow state-of-the-art and best practices. The Finance Department has earned this award for 21 years.
I just want to say thank you to management and city council. We work good as a team. We appreciate all the tools and that we are allowed to enter into our best practices, that we can do research, and allowing us to do our national organizations, that we can meet and network and collaborate with other agencies. So thank you very much. And this is my experienced team, Tracy Jordan, Josh Lauber, Chris Hazlett, and LeAnn Hendricks. And Josh is, Jason is on vacation. So very much thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Public Agenda, Ben Lee, Gangs, Guns, and Violence.
All right. We're going to open up to the Public Agenda part of our agenda, which means if you are speaking for the first time, please note that you have five minutes. And there will be a countdown timer on the screen, and we ask that you stay within that five minutes. However, of course, if you go over, we'll let you complete your thought. And I'm not sure if the person just named off is actually here, because I'm looking around and no one's coming forward. So I might just be saying this for nothing. Mr. Ben Lee, are you here? All right. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 27.
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 27. Does every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, sir. I noticed on item 17, it lists District 5 when it should be District 4. It's a change to a construction order for Auburn Hills Golf Course, which sits entirely in District 4, not District 5.
So we need to make a motion to amend the language in item 17 so that it states District 4, excuse me, District 5 instead of District 4?
No.
Yes, Mayor.
Should be District 4, not District 5.
District 4, not 5?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to amend item 17 so that it is District 4, not District 5. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. All in favor of said motion, please. Vote yea. Oppose, vote nay. After receiving seven yea votes, item 17 has been amended. Further discussion? There's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended. Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Petitions for Public Improvements.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor and councilmembers Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. We've had a little bit of a break from requests for petition approvals over the last few meetings. There were some language within the petitions related to utility acquisition fees that we needed to get changed through our bond council. That's done now. And so we're going to be catching up here over the next month, and you'll see quite a few petitions coming through for your approval. As always, the petitions before you today represent 100% of the improvement district's signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district and are valid per Kansas statute. Bell Chase Edition is in District 2, includes new petitions for water, sewer, and paving improvements. Cadillac Lake 2nd Edition in District 5 includes water and sanitary sewer improvements. Turkey Creek 4th Edition, in July of 2020, the City Council approved water, sewer, and paving improvements for Turkey Creek 4th Edition Phase 3. Developers now submitted new and revised petitions to split parts of Phase 3 into Phase 4. The new petitions are for water, sewer, and paving improvements. The revised petitions are also for water, sewer, and paving improvements, again, now in two phases. The courtyards at the Moorings, which is in District 6, includes new petitions for water, drainage, sanitary sewer, and paving. Staff recommends City Council approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize necessary signatures. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there improvement in public on this particular item? See none. We're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item. If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the new and revised petitions and budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1846 South Water Street.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kayla Nethercot with MABCD. Our first property today is 1846 South Water. It does reside in District 3. The property was first reviewed by the Board of Building Code Standards and Appeals on July 12th, 2021, and subsequently received extensions to September 13th, October 4th, December 6th, and then again until January 3rd, 2022. The property was reviewed by council on May 3rd, 2022, and received a deferral to today's meeting. By way of review, the structure was badly damaged by fire in January of 2020 and was uninsured at the time that it burned. The property was placarded as uninhabitable in April of 2021. It's a one-and-a-half-story frame dwelling, roughly 63 by 26 feet in size, with rotted and missing siding, a badly worn composition roof with holes, dilapidated front and rear porches, and a 20 by 18 accessory structure that has also been badly damaged by fire. The property was boarded up by MABCD contractors in June of 2021, and again in July of 2022. A structural engineer's evaluation of the property was begun in 2021 but has not yet been completed. Property taxes are delinquent for 2019, 2020, and 2021 in the amount of $2,188.57. Special assessments for mowing and board ups since 2021 totaled $2,755.16. The owner is deceased, and there was no will to assign ownership to heirs. Extensions by both BCSA and council were, in part, to allow the property to be handled through the probate process. Unfortunately, this process remains in the very beginning stages and has not progressed in a timely manner.
This item falls into District 3, so therefore Chair recognizes Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Is anybody here to speak on behalf of the owner or family?
I believe Mr. Duke's intended to be here, but I do not see him as of yet.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with keeping this around with us having to repeatedly go out there and board it up. It's a health hazard to the community. I know we've been getting emails and phone calls asking, what are we going to do with this? When's the, when are we going to get rolling? So I believe you and I had discussed language in regards to allowing them time to get this demolished themselves.
In this instance, the folks that are interested in it would not be able to do that, as they don't own it.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, so I'd like to recommend that the City Council close a public hearing, adopt the resolution declaring the building to be a dangerous and unsafe structure, and accept the BBCSA recommended actions to proceed with condemnation, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1227 North Spruce Avenue.
This property resides in District 1. The property at 1227 North Spruce is returning for council consideration after having received a six-month extension at the January 11th, 2022 council meeting. This extension has actually stretched from 180 days to 241 days. The property was originally reviewed by council on September 14th, 2021, and received a 120-day deferral to January 11th. The case was first heard by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals in March of 2021. The property has been vacant for seven or more years. A building permit was applied for on October 4th, 2021, and the owner had power restored to the structure. The building permit has subsequently expired with no additional work being performed or no additional inspections being performed. A plumbing permit was obtained in May of 2022 to allow for a pressure test on the gas service and was subsequently closed as completed. A new roof was installed at some point, but no roofing permit was obtained for that work. The property taxes are delinquent for 2021 in the amount of $446.56. And again, we have had contact with the owner, but I'm uncertain if he has arrived. So let me just check.
This was eyes in District 1. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Said that there was nobody here representing this property.
Not this one. No, sir.
Well, how about we do this? I know a roof was put on, and that cost some money. So let's see if we can help them out a little bit. I would like to move to extend timeframe for work to get done to December 31st, 2022, to get these repairs done and bring this property up to code. If at that point, the taxes are not paid in full and substantial progress is not made, then I would like to proceed with condemnation, allowing the 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received... We would ask that all members, yeah. Go ahead and give him an emperor's thumb, thumbs up. Let the record show that this motion, as we see, is seven yea votes. Madam Clerk?
Repair or removal of dangerous and unsafe structure, 1021 North Estelle Avenue.
This property also resides in District 1. The property at 1021 North Estelle Avenue is returning for council consideration after having received a six-month extension at the January 11th, 2022 council meeting. And as noted, that's actually become a 241-day extension. At this meeting, the owner asked for a final opportunity to repair the structure, which has been vacant for more than 10 years and badly damaged by fire. By way of a slight review, council first reviewed this property on October 5th, 2021, and granted a 90-day deferral at the owner's request to allow him time to demolish the property on his own. As of 8/31, property taxes were delinquent in the amount of $2,348.71. As a historical note, in the MABCD system, there are nuisance cases on this property dating back to 2009. The first housing case was opened in January of 2018. A building permit was obtained by the owner in December of 2021 and expired in 2022 with no work being performed and no inspections being conducted. The owner recently shared with me that he had hired an unlicensed electrical contractor, so no electrical inspections have been performed, and the structure remains without electricity. No foundation work has been completed under this building permit. A plumbing permit was obtained in December 2021 and expired in June of 2022 with no work, specifically a pressure test having been completed and no inspections performed. A mechanical permit was obtained in December 2021 and was canceled on May 16th of 2022 by the contractor. Notes in the MABCD system indicated that the cancellation was at the customer's request. No work was performed under this permit and no inspections were requested. A stop work order has been placed on this parcel as of 8/17/22, as no progress had been made, and the property was pending additional review by council. And I'm not sure if Mr. Washington is here.
Oh, come.
Go ahead and take the microphone.
I'm sorry. The taxes are paid. And I used electric that my friend used, and I guess the guy that he was working under, something happened when they did mine. All the electric is done. I paid the guy like $4,500 to do the work. I made a mistake, and now I need, I've had Mr. Electric come out last Friday and give me an estimate to be able to go forward with the electric, and I'm waiting on his estimate now. Now, I paid the taxes on the 29th or the 30th of last month. The taxes are paid in full. And I have, the plumbing's been worked on, but it's not, he haven't did any estimates. I don't know why. But it seem like since I'm out of town, a lot of the people that I'm hiring is, is, it's just been a headache, but I just need more time. I dumped a lot of money in the electric. She stated that I haven't been putting money into the property. That's not true. I made a mistake with the electric. But the electric is in good standing. Mr. Electric said that it's only a few things that he would change on the electric. But so other than that, the work I had done is professionally done. I just made a mistake hiring somebody that didn't pull the permit like he told me he would. But you can check now, and the taxes has been paid. And I got somebody lined up to clean the yard up and working on getting the lights on. Once the lights get on, I already got the cabinets built for the house. I'm a contractor, but I live out of Texas. And it's just been kind of, I had this house wired and plum a few years way back. I told you all that before. And then they come in there and stole it all out. So it's just been kind of a nightmare. But I'm in too deep to tear the house down. The foundation man is ready. I've already paid him half his money months ago, and he's ready to go. He just need the electric on to do what he need to do. So I just need more time. So I just need more time if y'all can work with me. I appreciate the time that y'all have worked with me, but I've, I've dumped almost $10,000 in this house from the last time I was here. I got a receipt here where I paid the electrician 4,500. The taxes now where I just paid that 2,400, you know? So I've been dumping, I paid the plumber, so I don't know where the information come from that someone saying that I canceled the, the permit. Why would I do that? It don't make sense. I don't know how that come up in records, but that's, that's false. That's, that's not right, you know? I would be really stupid to call and cancel a permit on a property that's about to get torn down, you know, and study dumping money into it. So how do that make any sense? I just, to see if y'all can grant me some more time to work on this property. Once the lights get on, everything will come together, you know?
We appreciate you being here. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. So going forward, you'll be using licensed folks to do the work, so.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The plumber's licensed, the, the guy that's doing the foundation's licensed. I just made a mistake and used the guy that my friend used. His, his went smooth. He, he had a guy that was licensed that he was working under, and somehow mine didn't go that way route, you know? But the electric work is done professionally. Mr. Electric came out and looked at it Friday, and he said he didn't see any issues in the electric. He just had some things that he, he said that he would want to do. You know, each electric does things different, you know? He want smoke detectors in every room when the guy that did it only put it in the hallways. So it's just simple stuff like that that need to be done.
Okay. You said you needed more time. How much time were you thinking you need?
It's just, I, I could say, I could talk quicker on the time if I had idea on the electric. I'm still waiting on Mr. Electric's estimate. If he's out of the ballpark, I'm going to check with another professional electrician, you know? So until I know the electric is really kind of hard, I mean, if y'all can give me whatever time you can give me, I'm going to be dumping money into it. And like I say, I got somebody lined up to, to clean the yard up. I noticed the trees. I have my cousin doing it, and then he, he ain't keeping the trees up. He's cutting the grass, but it look like a jungle over there, you know? So I'm addressing that right now while I'm looking for the electrician.
So if we gave you to the end of the year, was that enough time?
Yeah, that should, that should be, it should be, be pushing it. I mean, what, what we got, what is that, like three, four months?
From now, yeah, but the case has been open, at least. You know, we've seen it for almost a year now.
I appreciate every time, every little time y'all can give me, I appreciate it. I can't say that it'll be done, but I can't say that I will be, it will be changes, you know? I can't say that it'll be completely done because I, I don't have the electric person situated. Once he situated, it'll come together quick, you know?
Well, with that, I'm comfortable doing the same thing I did on the last case. So I would move to extend time on this property to December 31st, 2022, to get these repairs done, bring this property up to code. And taxes are paid. So in that case, we would, I would also ask that there is an inspection on this property by that time. If the inspection shows that no progress has been made and that this property is still a liability to the neighborhood, then I would move that we proceed with the condemnation process, allowing 10 days to start demolition and 10 days to complete removal of the structure.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there further input from the public on this before we vote on this motion? Because this is an open hearing. See none. With that, the motion has been made and seconded. Clerk, roll open a roll. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all.
Madam Clerk.
Public hearings for facade improvement, lending, park lease, and industrial revenue bonds, 423 East Douglas and 105 South Emporia, legacy antique building.
Good morning.
Good morning. Excuse me, good morning. Oh, apologize for that. Good morning, Mark Elder with the Development Services Office. This item for you is the public hearings for both a facade improvement loan as well as industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption only. This project is to rehabilitate the building located at 423 East Douglas and 105 South Emporia, the formerly legacy antique building. It's been renovated by the Kochna family. The actual purchaser will be Kochna Legacy LLC. Their total estimated project cost, which include interior and exterior improvements, as well as because they'll be locating their offices there, will include some furniture fixtures inside, is about $11 million. It's a three-story building, roughly 27,000 square feet, and it's been vacant since about Kochna Garvey Capital Partners is going to relocate about 86 of their employees for two of their companies, Keycentrix and Netability. Initially, they plan to occupy about 90% of the building, leaving about 2,700 square feet that can be used for like ground floor, floor retail or office to be leased, but it's also available for them if they need to expand and grow their buildings, their businesses in the future. The building here, this is the area of it, right there at the southwest corner of Douglas and Emporia. You can see to the south. We'll be talking about the, the garage there in just a moment. Just a few renderings of what the building looks like today and then the, the plans they have for the renovations for the facade improvements. So this is existing today, and you can see the first floor especially has a facade that's in, in need of some renovation. And this is what they're proposing to do with that as far, you know, you have the, the cleaning, the tuck pointing on the bricks, as well as replacing, repairing all the windows and the entrances on the first floor and the rest of the building. This is looking from the northeast back to the southwest on the building. You can see both the, the north and the east sides of that before, as well as what they're proposing for the renovations with the facade program. A few renderings, just because we're also talking about the total renovation project and using industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption only. Just a few renderings of what it might look like on the inside after they do their renovations and locate their businesses to the building. Now, let's talk specifically about the facade. It's maximum $1,035,000 to renovate that building. Again, that's the exterior brick repairs, the replacing windows and doors, new awnings and any additional work they need to restore that building. They're also putting a request for industrial revenue bonds not to exceed $11 million. That's to capture the cost to do the both interior, exterior, as well as furnishing and fixtures for the building. Again, sales tax exemption only, no property tax abatement. The third thing that they are asking today for the consideration by the council is a parking lease for up to 108 spaces in the garage immediately to the south, with the beginning rate of $35 per space per month. Breakdown of how the, the facade project is funded, you have an estimated $880,000 in improvement costs. That includes a 10% contingency we add in, and you take in the city's finance and administrative costs, it brings it to $1,035,000 is the maximum assessment. And how that again works is that the, you know, when the project is done, the special assessments would be spread against the building with the interest rates set by that bond zone which they issued, secured via lien against the property, repaid back over 15 years via a loan, but they pay that at the same time as they pay their taxes. Over the term of the construction, the owner will actually pay the construction costs and will be reimbursed once that facade project is done and they provide us the adequate documentation to reimburse, and then we can place those special assessments against the property. And again, the owner is actually repaying this over 15 years. The industrial revenue bonds, again, it's $11 million maximum. It's estimated that, that creates savings about $525,000 over the, the project, but then again, the owner will continue to pay property taxes on this project. For the parking lease, they have an option of up to 108 spaces for $35 per space per month. It's renewable every five years, and that'll be at the greater of either the current market rate or $35 per space. They can also request a, a connecting structure between their building and the parking garage to the south. This was done on the hotel on the west end of the block. That is subject to City Council approval as well, or City approval, engineering and permitting involved with that, and they would be responsible for the cost of both construct and maintain that structure. And this is showing you where the location is between the William Street Garage, as well as where they are with their building. So following the completion of the, the facade improvements is when the final assessment would be set, and we would go back and make that, any changes if it comes in less than that maximum $1,035,000. And then the IRBs would be a similar process. When the entire project is done, they would come back to the City Council to issue those bonds to finalize that project. We do have representatives from the developer in the audience today, and I will stand for any questions as well.
Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Well, open up to the public. Is there any public discussion on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. This is an exciting project. It's looking at the potential with that, that property and all the renderings versus what it looks like right now. So I'm happy to make the motion that we close the public hearings, place on first reading the ordinance adopting the facade improvement law, adopt the IRB resolution of intent, and approve the parking lease, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Petition to renovate, renovate building facade at 123 South Market Sterling Building.
Good morning, Mark Elder, again with Development Services. This is a petition to renovate the project, so similar to the last time, but we're setting a public hearing for two weeks out to actually consider this. So again, this item today is just to set the public hearing. But we want to give you a little background on what this project is. The building was recently purchased by Kingdom Investment One LLC, and they plan to rehabilitate the building at 123 South Market, is formerly the Sterling Building. Their total estimated cost for the project is about $5.7 million with a facade maximum cost of $565,000. Again, they'll be doing some exterior repairs and upgrades, replacing and adding some windows and entrances on the first floor, new awnings and additional facade improvements on that. You can see the location here at the southeast corner of Market and William. It's actually just west of the Kansas Comm that reopened in July, so it's in an area that's very benefited by having, having additional apartments and office space there. You can see the existing facade and how it is today, with a lot of windows and plywood on the first floor, and what they're proposing to do with this building. I'm going to go now to the, the south side, and very similar, you can see additional needs and what they're proposing to do with that project. So their estimated project cost from the developer, $461,000, but the city always adds a 10% contingency just because we're doing this maximum assessment where we approve the project upfront. So we're adding additional 10% contingency. But yeah, and those, the city admin fees and the financing costs, and you come to a maximum assessment of $565,000. This would be, would be eligible for the facade improvement grant, so actual cost 595,000, 565,000 would be the maximum assessment. Again, this project would have the interest rate set by the bond sale, repaid over 15 years, but secured by the lien against the property. Owner will again pay for the construction costs upfront and be reimbursed once that facade project is complete. So this, the resolution today would set the public hearing for September 20th to consider that maximum assessment ordinance in the facade improvements. At that time, staff would also be bringing forward a request by the developer for industrial revenue bonds, again, just for sales tax exemption only on that. Following completion of the facade and the rest of projects, that's when the final assessment would be set. With that, I would stand for any questions.
So questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there any input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then the Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this item resides in District 1.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm awaiting to the public hearing for my comments, so I would move that the council accept the petition, adopt the resolution setting a public hearing for September 20th, 2022, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
McAdams Park Baseball Field, League 42.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Troy Houtman, Director of Parks and Recreation. And with me is Bob Lutz from League 42 and world famous Larry Dennis, who's also a board member of League 42. So let's see what we got here. So the item that we're talking about today is in regards to McAdams adding a new baseball field to the, the already existing three fields that we have there. Some background, League 42 is named in honor of Jackie Robinson, the first African-American major leaguer. The league is primarily for urban children, four, five to 14 years old, and has a very low cost participation for participating in, in the league. It was founded in 2013. The first season was in 2014 with 16 teams and 200 players. It is now since grown and has maximized the space in those fields, hence the reason for the fourth field. We've done some major C I P improvements to this area. We've added a third baseball field in the past in 2015, concession stand and restrooms, and made lots of improvements to the fields. So it's now a great location, including the statue of Jackie Robinson, as well as some other C I P work from the engineering for those, for the road that's right in front of it. The analysis, League 42 has capped their participation rate at 600 for this past season. They've been having a lot of difficulty in scheduling all the fields with the five age groups that they have. Making up games has also been a difficult situation with poor weather. The new field would have artificial turf, which would be able to meet the demand and work with the weather as well. So last season, there was a lot of games that were canceled due to the weather, but with artificial turf, they can participate with that a little bit more easily. So League 42 wishes to add the fourth field. The park will, it'll help alleviate the crowding and ease the scheduling. New field will be artificial turf and will include lighting. Shaper Johnson and Cox is the architect who's done major work in this location before. Multi-Con has also done the construction at this location before. League 42 has raised the funds for the project, so there will be no cost to the city. They're on track for a 2023 season opening of the field, and it did go to the Board of Park Commissioners on August 8th, and prior to that went to the DAB as well. Both were approved. So financial and legal considerations, League 42 will pay for the improvements to McAdams Park and donate the finished product to the city, and the Law Department has reviewed and approved the agreement as to form. It's our recommendation from staff that the City Council accept and, accept the donation from League 42, which includes the design and construction of the fourth baseball field at McAdams Park, and all authorize and necessary signatures. I think Mr. Lutz has a few items that he wants to share as well.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me today. I have a few board members here as well. Just to reiterate, Troy covered most of it. When we started League 42 back in 2013, we knew that it would grow, and we knew that ultimately someday down the road, we would need to expand to a fourth field. I can assure you, there will be no, no asking for a fifth field. We understand that the room at McAdams Park is limited. We're proud to call it our home. It's where we want to be. It's where we want to be for now and forever. We love being at McAdams Park. We're adding a learning center just across the street at 1212 East 17th. We expect that to be open later this year. We do want to renovate the two existing big fields at some point, once we get the money raised as well, with artificial turf there. Artificial turf helps us play games, and these kids want to play games. So that's the reason behind the fourth field, just to ease our crowding. We're thankful for the opportunity. We've talked about this for a number of years, so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. But I think that's all I have.
Thank you. So questions for staff? See none? We're opening up to the public. Is there any input on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Hoheisel.
I did have one thing to say real quick. I've been part of this organization. I've been part of this organization at times. I have helped coach there a couple of seasons. I can't speak highly enough or just spreading the love of baseball around, and it's a great program. I am curious if you plan on putting a plaque to talk about the legendary exploits of the Purple Gators, possibly at the new field?
You are the best coach we've ever had. There, that'll give me some brownie points.
Yeah, that might.
Take a lobbyist job in your futures.
We're thankful for all the involvement that we've had with volunteers and people who've supported us throughout the years. This has expanded beyond even my wildest dreams, and I'm pretty much known as a dreamer. So we're elated at where we are, and we vow to continue to work hard to stay where we're at and improve even more. But thank you, Councilman.
No, thank you for everything you've done, Mr. Lutz. It's a great program for a lot of kids who deserve a chance to.
I appreciate that.
To enjoy baseball.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to echo the comments of my councilmember, but also in 2019, which seems like forever ago, way before the pandemic, in 2019, the City of Wichita was graciously awarded an All-America City accolade, and we had the daunting task of distilling down all of our great accomplishments and presenting really three main themes, and League 42 was one of those. And so it was a privilege and honor to work on that project, but for the City of Wichita to be named All-America City, League 42 was part of that. So thank you for all you do.
We've been a partner in that, for sure, and a partner in this project really from the beginning. The money that was allotted to League 42 from the city back in 2015 gave us an incredible jump start, and it provided for kids and you all, not all of you are on that council, but you all as councilmembers and representatives of the city government, I hope we're proud of that, and we've done our best to use those funds to do good things.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this resides in District One.
Thanks, Mayor. Before I make a motion, I did have a question for Troy.
Back to questions for staff.
Troy.
Yes, sir.
Just two quick questions. Will this new field be considered public property?
Yes, it will. It's a donation to the city, and it becomes city property. We will work with League 42 on all the scheduling and operations. They'll have priority, but we definitely have access to the fields. Currently, we have access to the other fields as well.
Okay. And those are considered public property?
They are.
So how can we work through? There's a few residents who've complained that when they try to go play on those fields, they're told they can't, even though it's a public field.
So during the season, we have League 42 operating those fields. Outside the season, if there's any requests, those requests should come to the city, come to the Parks and Recreation Department, and we can work with a schedule with League 42 to have access if needed.
Okay. And outside of season, anybody who wants to reserve a field to play kickball, softball, baseball, they can do that?
They can, and there'll probably be a fee that goes with that as well.
Okay.
Just like our other fields at other parks as well.
Just wanted to ask, I know you folks have said they haven't had the ability to, and just wanted that on the record. Thanks, Troy.
It's a great partnership. We work with League 42. It's all about scheduling, and we just have to have good communication to make that happen.
All right. Well, with that, I would move that the city council accept the donation from League 42, which includes the design and construction of a fourth baseball field at McAdams Park, and authorize all necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk roll open the roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Drug court outpatient treatment.
Morning.
Hello. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Nathan Emery, Court Administrator for the City of Wichita Municipal Court. Background on this is the Wichita Municipal Court Drug Court Program was created in 1995. It's one of the first in the country and is the first in Kansas. The current team is a judge, prosecutor, probation officer, treatment provider, attorney, and case manager. The case manager is a recent addition to this team, coming from the DOJ grant that we received a couple of years ago, and this is continuing that position, as well as looking at outpatient treatment providers. The components of the program include intensive treatment, regular court appearances, random drug testing, case management, education, and counseling. The primary mission of the court is to rehabilitate participants through intensive treatment, accountability, and responsibility being key components of the program. Program's primarily run by Judge Jones, and she really makes sure that the folks participating meet their gates, do what they're supposed to do. And as a result, you can see that the five-year average recidivism rate is less than 3%. We solicited proposals from quality treatment providers to provide outpatient treatment and case management. COMCARE was the sole treatment provider to respond, and they're the organization who we've worked with for a very long time, and we've got a great relationship, and they've provided great services to the program. Something to note is that this particular contract is one of several that helps us provide services through the drug court. That includes the day reporting center contract to do drug testing, and then coming out of the special alcohol liquor tax fund, we've got the continuum of care to do inpatient, some other things. But this is focused specifically on outpatient treatment and case management to help people be successful. Since 1998, COMCARE has provided treatment to drug court participants, so you can see that they've had a really long relationship with our drug court and have helped us be successful. The key outcomes are that participants remain drug and alcohol-free throughout the program, not obtain new legal charges, and remain employed or remain as a student throughout the program. Here are some of the results. As you can see, 80% is the target, and the outcome has been exceeded in the past three years. That is for remaining abstinent from mood-altering substances. Outcome two, not obtaining new charges. Once again, 80% is the target, and the program has exceeded that target for the past three years. Likewise, outcome three, staying in school or remaining employed, 80% is the target, and we've exceeded that for the past three years. The treatment costs, so COMCARE is going to be billing insurance providers for those who have insurance. For those who do not have insurance, COMCARE has a block grant, and so the outpatient treatment will primarily be funded through that block grant for the uninsured. And if folks don't have insurance and don't qualify under the block grant, that's when the cost would come to us, and we'd go through our liquor tax dollars, which we have adequate funding for. So that's a new model. In the past, we've paid for the service, and so this is actually much more advantageous to the city and allows us to use $61,000 to cover the costs of the case manager, who really helps folks be successful, get them to where they need to be, and keep them accountable in between the drug court settings. The contract has been approved as to form by the Law Department, and it's recommended that the city council approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right. We got a few people on the board. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you, Nathan, for the presentation and all your hard work on this. You know I'm a big fan, especially with my past experience. Two quick questions, just out of curiosity, and if you don't know, it's okay, but you mentioned that the recidivism rate is less than 3%. Just curious what it is for folks who don't participate in the drug court program? I'm just a data junkie. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know that I would be able to say what folks are doing.
No problem. Thank you. And then my other question is, we've all heard about the shortage of COMCARE staff, and so I was just curious if that's had an impact on this, or is there any additional information? Again, more just curious than anything.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Thank you.
It really hasn't had an impact on us. We've had a staff member from COMCARE that's been with us forever, Ms. Rena, and so there's been continuity for a lengthy period of time within the program, and we haven't seen some of those staffing shortfalls affect us.
That's great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. The vice mayor asked one of the questions there I had. The other one is probably just asking you kind of your opinion. Why is COMCARE the only one that's applying for?
I think it's probably because there's that lengthy relationship where probably others have an expectation that, and have seen that they're doing an excellent job, and they've been present in our courtroom and very active. But once again, that's just me injecting what I think is happening, but that may or may not be the case.
Okay.
But I think it's that relationship.
So we have other resources out there. It's not that COMCARE is just the only game in town that can.
No. And in fact, I think that you'll see when we bring the special liquor tax recommendations to you, there are others that we're funding in the community through the special liquor tax fund, and that'll come before you in the not-too-distant future.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Nathan, I'm just a little confused by some of the revenue streams. I think you mentioned early on that the case manager was new this time around, and where does that funding come from? I thought you mentioned DOJ, a DOJ grant.
Yes. Okay. Sorry for the confusion. And when we first brought on the case manager, that was a piece of the DOJ grant. We no longer have the DOJ grant, and so that is coming from the special, the liquor tax fund. So that's really the only piece that we're funding, expected to fund.
So we don't have to worry about a grant that expires, and then we have to find funding? We have funding for it going forward.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say I appreciate the work that you continue to do around us and giving folks an opportunity to rehabilitate and have that second chance is a big deal to me, and just wanted to say thank you for your work, and I know you've got other stuff you're working on, too.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action or approve the contract with COMCARE Addiction Treatment Services and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Fire apparatus.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember, Tammy Snow, Fire Chief. I'm here today to ask for a request for the purchase of some heavy apparatus. Normally, we average about seven heavy apparatus every two years. This counts based on two things, age and the condition of the fleet, so we rely very heavily on the input from fleet maintenance, and then also a decision support tool that has been utilized for several years now, that has identified as the target replacement in a villa is 14 years. This is what we currently have for frontline apparatus. We have 38 frontline apparatus, broken down into engines, trucks, special operations apparatus, and support service apparatus. And then we have 12 apparatus that are currently in reserve status, for a total of 50 apparatus. What we're asking for is to replace five engines. These units are currently of the ages of 2005, 2006, and they're all past the recommended replacement schedule. The project would cost $4.06 million and is financed through general obligation bonds. So my recommendation then is to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'll stand for questions.
Open up to questions. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Chief Snow. What happens to the five engines we're replacing? Do they go into reserve? Do we auction? What happens?
Normally, we put them on purple wave, but with the anticipated, trying to do some forecasting, we'll probably hold them for a little while to see what the output is on our predictive analytics, and also possibly if we're fortunate enough to get a safer grant. So we're just going to hang on to them for a while.
Yeah.
Further questions? See none? Thank you, chief. We're open up to public comment. Any public comment on this item? See none? Bring discussion back to the bench. If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Fire equipment.
Good morning. I just asked for fire apparatus, but I also need some equipment on it so we can function properly. So I'm here to ask you for some specialized equipment. It's related to the fire apparatus project. Basically, I'm asking for the hose, the nozzles, ladders, thermal imaging cameras, rescue tools. Those are just some of the examples, hand tools. The project costs $406,227, and is financed through general obligation funds. So my recommendation is to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. I'll stand for questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public on this item? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action or approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote.
Councilmember Blubak, could you cast your vote?
Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2022 sewer lift station rehabilitation.
Good morning, Mayor. City councilmembers. Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Item before you this morning would authorize funding to perform work on six of the city's sanitary sewer lift stations. This is an item that's familiar to council because we come back each year, this is part of an annual ongoing program. The city has 68 sanitary sewer lift stations, is funded annually, excuse me, out of the CIP, and projects are authorized or are prioritized based upon a risk-based approach. We have a number of lift station technicians that perform routine ongoing maintenance, and part of that program is they do inspections and they rank the conditions of the stations. And some of those variables include the aging condition of equipment, the characteristics of the drainage basin that the lift stations exist in, whether there are creeks or sensitive environmental conditions that an overflow might specifically upset, if there's emergency power supply, or if it has bypass capabilities, and then there's a score that's assigned to each lift station. This year, six lift stations will be addressed if the funding is authorized. Routine work includes replacing or rehabbing failing equipment, like pipes, pumps, valves, electronic controls, aging concrete structures, and then where it's appropriate, we also look at the capacity of the lift station and growth within the basin. So at this time, I'd like to recommend, I'm sorry, financial considerations, the adopted 2021 through 2032 CIP. The adopted 2021 through 2032 CIP includes $1.2 million in year 2021, and $800,000 in funds in year 2022 for the lift station rehab and replacement program, and staff requests a full amount of $2 million at this time to fund the project. It's recommended the city council adopt the resolution, authorize all necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget project, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures per charter ordinance 211. This item requires two-thirds majority vote, which is five. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Unified School District, 259, safety improvements.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is a request for annual funding for school district safety improvements. As the city is responsible for overseeing construction and maintenance of sidewalk streets and traffic control devices within the street rights of way, we have a desire and have a program where we've been working with USD 259 to provide for general safety and welfare of students and citizens by way of an annual budget and associated projects. The city and the Board of Education have had a formal agreement for several years now to coordinate and develop specific projects for improvements, with city staff being responsible for oversight of design, construction, and maintenance of each project. Engineering staff meets with USD 259 facility staff monthly. This ongoing effort for the last several years has proved to be really successful as far as making specific improvements around schools for the safety of students, as well as parents and the citizens that utilize that same area. And so I want to show you a couple of examples where improvements have been made. Ortiz Elementary School is at 33rd Street North in Arkansas. If you look at the picture on the left, prior to the work that was just done in this last few months, you can see that traffic queued up on Arkansas on the left side there. That was parents waiting to pick up students. This happened every single day, and what happened there is it created some safety issues with those who were in that queue of traffic, not there to pick up children, they would jump out into that northbound Arkansas traffic and create potential safety issues. The right picture is the first day of school this year because of the improvements that we made, which included a turnaround on 33rd Street and a new driveway into Ortiz. And that may not seem like a major change, but it was really a big deal here and something that we wouldn't have been able to do in the past without this funding source and the ability to work with the school district. Safety of crosswalks has become more significant, especially for parents, for teachers, for a lot of people in our community wanting to make sure that crosswalks are striped on a regular basis. The city council recently approved additional funding within the operating budget for the next several years to be able to restripe crosswalks on a more regular basis across the community. We've also been able to use this funding to supplement that same effort, but to be able to take care of the most critical ones. So over the last year, we were able to stripe crosswalks at six different schools. We worked with some of you as priority issues came through at certain schools, and will continue to do so, excuse me, in the coming year. Forrest Mann, this crosswalk that you see on 11th Street, near 11th Street, it had been at a different location. We come to find that it was grossly underutilized. Watching what school traffic had done, the school had made some changes for their access, ingress and egress, and over time, the crosswalk that was there was effectively not being used. So we were able to use this funding to move the signal, to rebuild the crosswalk into place that'll be utilized now, and makes it a lot safer, especially for the students that are going to and from school. The adopted capital improvement program includes $100,000 annually in school district safety improvements and general obligation bond funding. The city and USD 259 agreed to a total annual cost up $200,000 per calendar year with a split of 50% from each party. The city will pay upfront costs and be reimbursed by the school district for half of the cost. Staff is recommending initiation of all $100,000 at this time. With that, staff recommends city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Council Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for the presentation and all your work on this. Just a really logistical question out of curiosity. I'm sure that $100,000 a year isn't enough for all the improvements that are needed. How are they prioritized, or how do, you said you meet monthly with USD 259? I'm just simply curious, how do we decide which projects rise to the top?
So far, I think this program's been in place for about three years now. So far, it's been fairly easy during these meetings with staff that the school district is able to bring their expertise, based on their administration, based on, they've got their Director of Safety, she's involved in this quite often. It becomes pretty apparent where the biggest priorities are. That's a good question. To this point, I think that this amount of funding's worked fairly well. I don't think that we really have too big of a backlog of issues that need to be addressed. So so far, I think it's working well. That's something that I talked to staff about to make sure as we went forward with the CIP, whether we needed to consider or contemplate requesting additional funding. But actually, so far, it's working pretty well.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I like this program and appreciate continuing to work with the district. Just had two questions. One, I think you've answered before, but I'm gonna ask you again. So on the crosswalks around elementary schools, is it possible to have, like, piano keys as the crosswalk, which is cool for the young people and shows them a little differently, like we had talked about before, where they can walk? It's a little more creative than just the white stripes.
You're talking about doing what we've looked at before, something that actually looks more like piano keys as opposed to what this crosswalk shows here. You know what, something I don't mind looking into again, one of the concerns that we've had in talking to our traffic safety experts is, can be what that does for potential distraction for drivers and not fully recognizing what the intent of that is, but I certainly don't mind. I know some other communities have done that, and we could look into that more and see, and I can let you know what we find out.
Okay. And then the other one I saw that, I think it was this picture where you talked about, maybe there wasn't initial communication on how the district was redoing that building. We still have that same thing with that crosswalk over by Spade, where they built the new building north of where the old building was, and that crosswalk did go to the front door, and now it doesn't. So most of the activity from the young people is on 11th Street. That crosswalk's like in between, so it's just in a weird spot.
And I'll look into that, too. That sounds familiar to me now that you mention that again, and I was actually thinking at one time that we might have had that resolved, but since you're asking today, I'm guessing we did not. So I'll get back with staff on that and see where that's at.
Right. Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action or approve the budget, adopt the resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of letter of intent for grant application, Calfskin Creek watershed.
Welcome.
Good morning. For the record, Don Henry, Public Works and Utilities. Item before you at the moment would authorize staff to submit a letter of intent for building resilience and communities grant, funding to build flood mitigation projects in the Calfskin Drainage Basin. You'd be familiar with this project because we did apply for this funding in 2021. Just a little bit of background, the Calfskin Basin includes an area about 17 and 1/2 square miles, roughly from 13th Street North, south of Pawnee, and from the Calfskin Creek westward to about 183rd Street. It has mixed rural and urban use development, areas of agricultural uses, and the basin is prone to flooding in all areas, and includes areas of FEMA-regulated floodway and floodplain. The city has worked with Wood Environment and Infrastructure over the years to build a model to thoroughly understand the dynamics of drainage within the basin, and also understand the evolving rainfall patterns as well. Wood built upon that work and identified a project that would include construction of two dry detention dams to relieve downstream flooding in the Calfskin. Those are illustrated on the slide in front of you in the irregular shaped light blue patterns on the map there. One is in the northwest corner of the basin, the other is in the southern portion of the basin. As reported before, the improvements would remove 450 acres from the 100-year floodplain. It would make land that's currently undevelopable potentially developable. 149 structures would be removed from the floodplain, and then life safety concerns due to extreme street flooding will also be eliminated, exemplified by 212 homes and seven streets that are currently affected by impassable streets during a 100-year storm at this time. The image before you is produced by the wood model, and it very well illustrates what goes on across the basin and residential areas. The image on the left shows what happens now with a 100-year flood event. You can see that the ditches are overfull, the road's overtopped with water, and then the model shows with the proposed improvements in place that the street is relatively dry and the ditches are functioning as designed. Cost of these improvements remain estimated to be $40 million. The city and county partnered for submittal of a grant application in 2021, and split the $10 million match at $5 million apiece. Unfortunately, the project was not selected as part of the 2021 initiative. 53 projects were selected out of 788 applications in the program, and the Calfskin project finished in the 69th percentile. So there were 200 and something projects that scored better, and the city-county effort scored better than about 550 of the applications. Staff recently met with FEMA representatives and identified areas to strengthen the Calfskin application. Ongoing work would include continuing to work with our consultants as well as our federal lobbyists. They have a staffer on board that is familiar with the BRIC program. We would be looking to perform an analysis on the natural solutions, the environmental benefits, and the populations that would derive benefit from the natural features, looking at possibly something like the Proct Wetland Project or something similar that would be a regional draw. We would be looking to better define the population that would benefit from the flood relief itself, and then look to research selective applications for opportunities to enhance the city and county effort. Funding has been increased in the federal program from $1 billion in 2021 to more than $2.2 billion currently. Selection criteria are largely unchanged, it'll be the same process. It's competitive, and it requires the submittal of this letter and intent through the state, through the Kansas Division of Emergency Management by September 15th of this year. And if invited to apply, a subsequent grant application must be submitted by December 31st of this year. And if selected to apply, we would, staff would return to council for that authorization. And then, again, the same terms, this go around the city and county. If approved, would be splitting the $10 million local match 50-50. As, the funding is included in the currently adopted CIP for the local cost share, and at this time, I'd like to recommend that council authorize staff to submit the necessary letter of intent and authorize the necessary signatures, and at this time, I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff? Chair recognizes Councilmember Blubow.
Thank you. I know we're working with our lobbyist, Jim Davenport. Is the county working with their lobbyists to help us? Maybe not in Washington DC so much, but maybe working with our local electeds to let them all know how important this is to us?
Councilmember Blubow, they also use Jim Davenport.
They do.
Yes.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to authorize staff to submit the LOI and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Pass that. All members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Engineering Design Services for subdivision improvements.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, again, Gary Janson, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is a request for an amendment to the code for engineering design services for subdivision improvements. This item will look familiar as it's a modified version of a discussion we had in June of this year, and it's being brought back at the request of the building community. So it's got a little bit different request this time. So just to kind of go back a little bit of history on this, the contracting of engineering design for public improvements related to new development has historically followed administrative regulation, which allows the landowner and the city to mutually agree on a consultant regardless of the contract amount for the design services. That consultant has traditionally been the firm who completed the plat, and as the plating is a private transaction, that landowner can hire a consultant at its discretion. I will tell you that that is typically a competitive process on that and not publicly through the city, but by the way they go about doing that, they will look for a plating engineer based on experience, scheduled capacity and price. So they do create competition on their end when initially selecting that consultant for the plating process. As I mentioned, in June of this year, the city council acted to require a competitive solicitation for all development design contracts exceeding $50,000, which would align with the code, and that has now added approximately six weeks to the project development process since inception, just compared to where we were at. I think all of you had a chance to see this in reviewing with the development community. This diagram shows how development process evolves from initial plating work to design of public infrastructure. I mentioned before that the plating process is a private contract between a landowner and a plating engineer of its choosing. As this team works through the final plating, they have performed a full survey of the property, prepared a complete drainage lock grading plan for the subdivision, and calculated the anticipated costs of the infrastructure improvements for all phases of the project. And that's just amongst a few other things that need to be done during that process. The liability for this work lies with the plating consultant, as you can see as this progresses from left to right. When the same consultant moves forward with the city, as has been done by our previous process, the city contracted design services, it carries the liability forward contractually. In the event that a new consultant is assigned to the work, none of the liability of the plating consultant moves forward, this obliges the new consultant to replicate the work, costing time and money, and ultimately increasing the cost for homeowners. To align historic residential development practice with the city code moving forward, staff recommends amending section 2.64020 of the code as follows. This would be an added item to the code stating that the purchasing manager is authorized to approve contracts for design services for subdivision projects subject to city council approval, and I wanted to highlight that part, that all contracts would still come forward for city council approval if such projects are financed through the use of public bonds and the contracting process has followed procedures and been subject to city staff oversight as described in administrative regulation. This amendment would align the current administrative regulation and city ordinance by allowing the city council to approve consultant selection for all contracts above $50,000. Approval of the amendment will allow landowners to continue planning and scheduling for new development design as they have for many years, utilizing the engineering consultant most familiar with the property and proposed improvements. There are no financial considerations associated with this ordinance. Staff recommends city council approve the amending ordinance, place the ordinance on first reading, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager. I'm Wes Galion with the Wichita Dari Builders Association, and I'm here this morning to not add anything to what Gary said, he covered it very aptly, but to thank you all for your willingness and openness to meet with us when we had concerns about what happened in June and answer questions you might have, listen to your questions you might have, listen to your concerns and you listen to ours. And we do appreciate the willingness of you all to put this back on the agenda. It is a good process, it has a history of significant and practical and purposeful use and we would like to see it, see your support of it this morning. If you have any questions of any of our consultants, Chris Moma's here with the Carver Company this morning, who deals in this, with these issues and other issues, as do other consultants that you met with, I'm sure he'd be glad to address any concerns you might have.
Thank you. Further input from the public? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion on this item. If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the amending ordinance, place the ordinance on first read and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk Roper, and all members cast their vote. Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
RAD Public Housing Update and Resolution Supporting the Repositioning of Remaining Public Housing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sally Steng with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. Today I have an update on our rental assistance demonstration as well as a resolution supporting the repossessioning of the remaining 352 single-family homes. So very brief background, I know we've been through this many, many times. So the rental assistance demonstration allows public housing agencies to convert their units from public housing to a project-based Section 8 contract. And why would we want to do that? Well, RAD allows those properties then to acquire debt in order to complete much-needed repairs that have been, you know, deferred for many years due to underfunding of the public housing program by HUD and Congress. So in February of 2017, the Wichita Housing Authority Board approved the RAD contract for two applications, grouping 226 units of multifamily senior housing and then a separate project for 352 units of single-family homes. And that represents the entire 578 units in the public housing portfolio. So the WHA was successful in securing tax credits, the tax credit investor, a HUD loan and gap financing for the multifamily senior buildings, with a total project cost just less than $36 million. In October of 2021, that project closed financing and construction began. Update on that construction, so McLean Manor, the residents were relocated in November of 2021 from the high-rise McLean Manor over to the high-rise Greenway Manor and construction began. We had a little rough start with supply chain issues and labor shortages like most projects, but mechanical systems, plumbing, and electrical have all been completed at McLean. Indoor finishing work is underway and we expect that to be completed by the end of the year. Exterior improvements will begin after the interiors because we want to make sure we can get these units occupied as soon as possible and, you know, as weather permits, of course. We're anticipating that the McLean residents will move back to McLean from Greenway in January of 2023. And any residents at Greenway who want to permanently transfer to McLean can at that point. All relocation expenses, of course, are borne on the project. Rosa Greg, there's 32 units of duplexes there, 18 units have been completed and 18 residents have been moved from unrehabbed units into fully rehabbed units. The tornado shelter for those with mobility impairments is being installed as we speak. Community room upgrades are currently underway. There's a typo, 12 additional units are underway at this time and we expect all 32 units to be completed by the end of 2022. Again, exterior improvements will begin after all interior work is complete and weather permits. Greenway Manor construction will begin about the first quarter of 2023, with the exception of the roof replacement, which is happening right now. We wanted to make sure to get that roof replaced before the weather coming this winter. The residents that do not wish to permanently transfer to either McLean or Rosa Greg will be temporarily relocated to private market units. This is because the tax credit rules will not allow us to temporarily relocate those residents into a tax credit unit. So we will be using private market units for that temporary relocation. And we're expecting that construction's going to take approximately a year. The Bernice Hutcherson, those are, there are six triplex units at that site. That construction will begin once Rosa Greg is complete and that work will happen in stages similar to what we've done at Rosa Greg. Well, we'll do the construction on vacant units, move residents in, permanently move them one time into those newly rehabbed units and start work on the next phase. So the single-family homes, well, we were not successful in securing a tax credit or an investor for the tax credits or a HUD loan or gap financing. So tax credit investors, many of them, as well as HUD declined, stating scattered site single-family homes were too expensive and too difficult to manage and maintain. So in May of 2021, HUD convened a national panel of repossessioning experts to provide us guidance and they also provided in July of '21, a technical assistance contract with Communities Group. Analysis of the rents permitted under the RAD program revealed the project could not support the level of debt service needed to complete the requisite repairs. So you see here, a five-bedroom single-family home renting for $536, you know, four-bedroom at $462, that's not enough cash flow to even support maintenance and management of those properties, let alone substantial debt service. So HUD strongly encourages the repossessioning of public housing due to decades of underfunding, the level of deferred maintenance, and the difficult portfolio structures such as scattered site, single-family homes. And they provide us several mechanisms for that repossessioning, Section 18, which is demolition or disposition of those properties. Section 22, they call streamlined voluntary conversion, which is supposed to be similar to Section 18, but with fewer strings, but it's limited to portfolios of less than 250 units. Section 32 homeownership and RAD, the key thing to note is none of these mechanisms provide any funding. They're just an administrative way to reposition your properties. Then comes along the Affordable Housing Fund. So we recognize that that provided a unique opportunity to leverage the sale of those public housing units. And the evaluation of that opportunity and the capacity has led us to the following plan for disposition of the public housing, single-family homes. We're looking at Group 1, 37 truly scattered units in decent condition. We would be requesting disposition under Section 18 of the Housing Act at the appraised value, which has come in at just over $3 million. Sold through the city's Office of Real Estate Services with no affordability restrictions. The sales proceeds, we're going to request they be used to pay off pre-development loan for the failed RAD project and the remaining balance to go to the Affordable Housing Fund. And that Section 18 application is coming to the Wichita Housing Authority Board next Here's a map of the location of those properties. As you see, they're truly scattered. Part of the reasoning of just selling these outright is they don't make for a great project. We've had discussions with our nonprofit developer partners that say it's really challenging when the properties are so scattered for them to create a viable project. Group 2 is 235 homes that could qualify for Affordable Housing Funds. The Affordable Housing Fund will prioritize projects that rehabilitate the WHA units with affordability restrictions that are in a qualified census tract in the established central area. And here's a map that just shows how those are dispersed primarily to the northeast and the southwest. Group 2A, so the first grouping of projects, the first RFP we're looking to put out is 66 homes in two pilot areas. Pilot Area 1 is 23 homes at Haskell and St. Clair. Pilot Area 2, 43 homes at Minnesota and 25th. We'd request disposition under Section 18 through an RFP through the Affordable Housing Fund. So that RFP would be issued so that bidders can place a bid to purchase one or more homes, apply for Affordable Housing Funds for gap financing, and request project-based vouchers if they were proposing to do a rental project. The majority of the environmental review work on that, that group is complete and the appraisals are underway. And we anticipate bringing that Section 18 demo dispo application to the WHA Board in the next 30 to 60 days. And we will again request all sales proceeds to revolve back to the Affordable Housing Fund. So here are the maps of 2A, so those 66 units, the Haskell and St. Clair down southeast and Minnesota and 25th, and the, I'm sorry, southwest, and Minnesota and 25th and the northeast. The next group is 149 homes in the QCT and the established central area. We hope to make these funds available for the next round of RFP through the Affordable Housing Funds if funds remain after Group 2A. We're going to request disposition under Section 18 or Section 22 voluntarily, I can't talk today, streamlined conversion if the portfolio at that point is under 250 units. Again, requesting that the proceeds revolved back to the Affordable Housing Fund. So that's the majority of those units in those two areas. Group 2C, these are my challenging units. These are all in the floodplain and they all have some significant damage. And so we're still evaluating options. They may come out under an RFP, they may, depending, have to come back for a demolition request. We're still evaluating and having conversations with other resources on those particular 20 units. And here's where they're located on the map. You'll see majority on Murdoch in that floodplain area. Group 3 are 35 homes in Country Acres outside of a qualified census tract, so they're not eligible for the Affordable Housing Fund. However, this is a very desirable area and there's a high level of interest from developers. So we wish to request disposition at fair market value through an RFP under Section 18 or 22 with affordable use restrictions and request again that the net proceeds revolve back to the Affordable Housing Fund. And there they are on the map there at Central and Ridge, just south of Central, right behind the YMCA. Group 4 is 45 single-family homes in South City outside the qualified census tract, so not eligible for Affordable Housing Funds. We're using remaining public housing funds to rehabilitate those homes. We actually have an RFP on the streets now for the first five properties there. And we would request disposition under Section 18, Section 22, or possibly Section 32 homeownership with requests that those net proceeds revolve back to the Affordable Housing Fund. So just gives you a kind of a glimpse there on Hydraulik and Berkeley where those properties are. The pink ones are the ones that are actually out for bid now. Unbeknownst to many, public housing owns a few more pieces of property and we'd like to also include that in the disposition. We have a vacant lot on Piot Street, wish to sell for infill development for affordable, for one affordable home. There's a park called Ash Park in the neighborhood of, at Minnesota and 25th. We'd like to request HUD permission to give that to the Parks Department as a public benefit. And the old housing office building on River View to be given to the Police Department as public benefit. You can see on this map, the, on the left map, the vacant lot, it's a little bit hard to see the, the yellow highlight on the, on the green grass, but that's the vacant lot and then the two park parcels. And then the, the image on the right has the old housing office on it. Few more random properties, so a random lot on random load, on random road to be sold for infill development of an affordable home. Then we have two lots in Country Acres, which are a pocket park that we're proposing be either given to the Parks Department as a public benefit or sold for infill development if it's determined it's not feasible to keep it as a park. And then there's two adjacent lots to the park, again, to be, either be given to the Parks Department as public benefit or sold for infill development. Again, here are the two maps, one on the left, the random lot on random road, and then the four park parcels in Country Acres. So all HUD reposition mechanisms require consultation with local government. Most PHAs, public housing authorities, are not structured as a division within a department of local government. So, and our Wichita Housing Authority is a division within the Housing and Community Services Department. And as such, this whole project has been brought to you several times over the last five years. We've had lots of consultation with local government. And so one of the application requirements for next week's Section 18 application is a letter of support, a resolution of support that formalizes the local government's support of the repossessioning of the public housing properties. There is no impact to the general fund. The Wichita Housing Authority will request that HUD allow net sales proceeds above and beyond the cost to pay off the pre-development loan be used to sustain the Affordable Housing Fund. The Law Department has drafted, reviewed, and approved the resolution as to form and it is recommended that the council receive and file the rental assistance demonstration and public housing update, place the resolution supporting repossessioning of public housing on first reading and I'll stand for any questions.
All right, questions for staff? We'll start off with Councilmember Blue, Bluebaugh.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You know, this has been months and years of, there's a lot of public frustration as to why some of these houses aren't out there on the market.
Yes.
We have record shortage of homes, affordable housing is a true problem, and we have so many people that want to take that first step into homeownership and they see these properties here, they call us all the time, what the city's doing? What are they doing? They continue to get broke in. Why aren't they putting these out there so that we can purchase these properties? So, you know, I, I look at some of these homes and from what I know of them, like the Country Acres, those are, are prime, prime homes for, for entry-level, first-time buyers. The same thing with, with 2A, that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty desired area. I guess my first question is, you've mentioned developers a few times. What are we doing to reach out there to first-time homeowners to try to get them in some of these properties?
Sure. Most of these properties need significant rehabilitation.
It's more than just carpet and paint then?
Yeah, way more than just carpet and paint. We're averaging about $50,000 a unit and that's because we went through the whole process of trying to put together the repossessioning application ourselves. So we have full plans and specs on every one of these properties. So they do need work. But in the meantime, we are working with our partners. We're working with Habitat for Humanity, we're working with our own individual and family development program, trying to get families ready for homeownership, trying to identify families who may be interested. But we're still going to have an obligation to make sure we have enough rental stock in our community, especially for the relocation of families living in these units now. So it's going to have to be a balance.
So is this the first time we're reaching out to private development to, to offer these up to get them out there on the tax rolls?
It will be once we issue the RFP. At these, the first 37, those are just going out on the open market. Individual buyers, developers, whoever wants to, to put in a bid on those will be able to. Everything beyond there, we're looking to retain in an affordability restriction.
It, it feels a little bit like we're in a cycle where we think we have this funding and we just sit on our hands and let the properties continue to deteriorate and, and we're not putting them out there and for private investors to come in there and take them over. So do you think we're going to be able to accelerate that a little bit with some of these?
Sure, I mean, we're definitely, we're bringing the first application. Now, mind you, HUD says it'll take them at least 60 days to approve our application. So that's the first application. We're getting ready in 30 to 60 days to be bringing the second application to the WHA Board. There is a lot of environment, each environmental review for each house is 600 and 900 pages long. And those are just requirements we have, an obligation, there is no getting around it. It's an expensive endeavor. We also have to have appraisals. So once we made this, once the council approved the Affordable Housing Fund and this was the direction we were going, we have been working behind the scenes in the consultation with the residents, consultation with partners, doing all of the legwork related to the application as well as environmental review appraisal, et cetera.
Can you give me an example of, like the Country Acres homes? What's, what's $50,000 in repairs? Is the plumbing completely stripped out? Is this, because most of those were built in the 50s and 60s, so I wouldn't think there's foundation issues and stuff.
Generally not foundation issues. We are looking at HVAC systems. We're looking at some of them, some of our properties are still working on 100 amp service, electrical service from the 50s and 60s. So some of the electrical is being updated, all of the windows being replaced in those homes. Our, my biggest nightmare is, is somebody wanting to do a Band-Aid, you know, and do a very quick rehabilitation and try and sell it to a first-time homebuyer who then has lots of repairs in the first, you know, five years.
I'd like more, I'd like more detail on those to see what exactly is costing $50,000.
And I'm hoping it's going to stay under 50. I'll be honest with you, you know, we put out those first five in South Cities and, and the bids came in 100% higher than engineers estimate. You know, you're like, whoa.
Yeah, I'd love to know, better understand some of the issues with the homes as to what is preventing them to being out there on the market.
Well, right now, the prevention of getting them on the market is the HUD use restriction. That's, that's the item that is preventing us from putting them on the market for sure.
What about the 235 homes up north? What's the long-term plan for that?
Well, we would love for enough funds to be able to revolve through the Affordable Housing Fund. Housing Fund. Still, if there's no Affordable Housing Fund, it's not going to stop us from putting them out under an RFP and hoping, you know, different interested parties can bring other resources to the table. We're hoping under the Affordable Housing Fund, you know, that's going to be used for gap financing only. So until we get into the weeds, we don't know how far it's going to go.
Is there any way the council mayor, we could get maybe monthly updates as to what's going on here? Because it seems like it's going on and on and on. So I realize you're going through a lot trying to get all this done, but it's, we've got to continue to be able to tell something to the public because they continue to inquire why these properties are.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Not necessarily directly related to this program, but a question about a council action we took where we approved special assessments to one property on Ninth and Hillside to bring all the rest of those properties out of the floodplain. I know the council did that. I don't think Sally was a part of that. But I know we did vote on that sometime last year, I believe. I just wanted to know, are those properties up around Ninth and Hillside being assessed already because of council's action? And if so, does a developer or that particular developer have to take that action to bring those houses out of the floodplain, or is that something the city can initiate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, I need to look into that. I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. It was, it was all the properties, the Diggs property on Ninth and Hillside, and I believe the homes right behind it, all the way over to, I think that's Felucia. And I know with that proposal, they said that would bring all the rest of those houses back west out of the floodplain. But I know that there's been no actual development on that property, but I know we took that action, so just wanted to see where we were.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Sally, for the presentation. Couple of quick questions. What standards are we rehabbing the houses up to? Are we trying to get them up to Section 8 code and above, or is there an independent set of standards that we're trying to achieve?
Oh, definitely have to exceed housing quality standards. Section 8 standards set the bar pretty low.
Right.
To be honest with you.
Right.
Yes.
So, but we are going above Section 8?
Absolutely. I mean, HUD actually requires that we use energy-efficient practices in any type of rehabilitation, so we're, you know, high-efficiency windows, high-efficiency HVAC, AC equipment, things like that. So definitely trying to raise the bar on the condition of affordable housing in our community.
Okay. Also, I see it says the homes must sell at or above appraised value to avoid the 30-year affordability period, which is not desirable. Could you give just a little bit of background on the 30-year affordability?
Yes. If these properties sell for even $1 under the appraised value, HUD puts a restriction of 30 years on the property, which would have to be then administered, monitored throughout the period. We can, as a community, the Housing Authority Board can, or the City Council, depending through the Affordable Housing Funds, can impose its own affordability restrictions. We're just trying to make sure that those properties come out from under the HUD review.
So if it looks like they're going under the appraised value, can we just pull it back and say it's a rental for another couple of years until the market turns again, or?
Yeah, if we don't get a bid at or above, it would not sell at this point. We would have to reevaluate why it didn't. I don't expect, I've seen the appraisals. I don't expect we're going to have a problem whatsoever in those properties selling. It's something we're going to be watching through the whole process. It's part of why we're doing it in groups, is as funding and capacity becomes available and knowledge as these things, as we work through the different groupings, we'll continue to move forward.
And what do we need, like as a city, what are our shortcomings to running a 30-year affordability plan?
There is no funding to administratively support it at all from HUD. So we would be responsible for ensuring that that property remain affordable and meet all of HUD's requirements of affordability, but would have no funding stream to hire staff to do that.
So staff would be two, two additional staff members, three?
It would really depend on the number of properties that you had go under the affordable or under the appraised value. Now, mind you, that, what they're buying it for circles back into the Affordable Housing Fund. So it's an easy way for us to leverage that resource because whatever, if they want to, if they're going to buy it for $40,000, that $40,000 is going to come back and go back into the Affordable Housing Fund to provide the gap financing, in essence.
Yep. Okay. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Further questions? Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sally, for the presentation. I'm just curious how many of those homes are in the approved area for the incentive that we just passed a couple of weeks ago?
We would have to actually get with planning to help us overlay a map and get the GIS data to see how many. My guess is that a great deal of the group that are in the qualified census tract are going to fall within the incentive district. So at this point, I can't give you an exact number, but it's going to be close because those incentive districts overlay with the qualified census tracts.
Okay. And my other question is, would we consider the homes that the city owns outside of the incentive area more desirable to first-time homebuyers?
Well, you know, when I talk about like the Country Acres, it's just got a lot of good things going for it. It's got the YMCA right there. It's in a decent school district. It's got job opportunities available. Those are the things we're always looking for when we're looking at appropriateness, you know, and what's a good, a good fit for affordable housing, and especially for families. If you look, most of these units are four, five, and six bedroom. So we're talking large families with children.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Blue.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I remember correctly, I think a lot of these are outside of those, that incentive area. And I think that gives further proof that they are more desired properties because we're not even offering the same infill incentives that we are to the rest of the area. So, yeah, I would really like to have more information.
Thanks, Sally.
And to note, each one of these applications is going to come back to the WHA Board, which you comprise with the resident commissioner. So we won't be able to take additional steps or additional action without your further approval.
I think that's probably more accurate in the Southwest than in Northeast.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you, Sally. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a potential future conflict, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the rental assistance demonstration and public housing update and place the ordinance supporting the repositioning of public housing on first read. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive six yea votes to one abstention, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Water distribution system analysis.
Mayor, Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The last item I have for you this morning is a request for contract approval for analysis of our water distribution system. As you're all aware, in October of last year, we had a large diameter water main burst near I-135 and 18th Street North. As a result of that, City Council took action at the time under public exigency to approve contracts with Donlinger Construction and Professional Engineering Consultants related to the repair, evaluation, and repair of that water main break. At the same time, Burns &amp; McDonald was hired by way of an on-call contract for an expedited analysis of the city's water distribution system, and we're here today to request an extension of that contract. This shows the water main break that happened near 18th and I-135. This line was installed in 1969. The line was out of service for many months while internal testing and analysis was completed. Repairs have now been made and the line is back in service. The break of that line resulted in a boil water advisory, and the primary goal of the Burns &amp; McDonald contract was to identify the root cause of that break and vulnerabilities and risk within our system that could potentially cause another such advisory. This map shows our, all of the water mains within our system that are 20-inch diameter and larger across the community, being the blue line. Underneath that, yellow pipes, what's called PCCP pipe. It's a particular type of pipe, concrete pipe, like the one that ruptured within our system. An Interpace pipe is a particular brand of pipe that there's been issues with across the country that we're going to dig in a little bit deeper with this contract and see if we can figure out where our most vulnerable pipes might be. The original contract is now exhausted. It was utilized again to determine if any critical situations are apparent at this time, as well as exploring the cause of the break. We did some in-depth testing of the full 2,000 feet of isolated pipe where the break occurred, and it showed a small portion of that, maybe 3% to 5%, typically on this type of pipe that needed replacement. We believe that same trend to be true within the rest of our large pipes, with the challenge being to identify those suspect areas. This effort will help develop a multi-year program for identifying where the highest risks are, how to effectively test those pipes, and then to estimate short, mid, and long-term costs and plans for those for pipe repair and replacement. This will help inform future CIP and rate impact discussions if necessary. I mentioned that Interpace pipe. Our system includes that brand of pipe. Again, there's been nationwide problems over the last few years. This pipe that ruptured was that Interpace pipe. That'll help us really dial in more of where our focus needs to be. That internal testing that we did on that pipe that broke really helped us have a better understanding of what it might take to get there, but we need further analysis so that we can really dig down and try to get to, again, the root of what caused the original break and try to find out where we're most susceptible in the future. I got a couple of things I want to show you here real quick on what our current modeling can do. This shows a map of the city looking at average day minimum pressures. Generally, all of this that you see, the lowest operating pressures are the green, it's 40 to 60 PSI. There's no red shown on this map, which is the point where we get to less than 20 pounds per square inch of pressure in our system, which is the threshold generally for causing the boil water advisory. So this is what our model does for us now, the model that Burns &amp; McDonald originally created. This shows a zoomed-in perspective. The red area is showing the modeling of what happened after the pipe rupture, ruptured, and you can see a significant area that's less than 20 pounds per square inch. That's what put us into the boil water advisory, something that we want to avoid in the future. And again, we're trying to find areas where this may happen again. I just wanted to show these two maps real quick. These were scenarios we looked at after the original pipe broke, looking at a 48-inch pipe that crosses at the canal, and then a 36-inch pipe near Hess Pump Station. What would happen if those pipes broke? You could see we would have issues again with the area in red where the system pressure would drop below 20 PSI, which could potentially put us in another boil water advisory, also with putting certain areas of the community just out of service completely. So we've been able to utilize the model so far to do some predicting on where that might happen, but again, it really comes back to the most critical pipes within our system where it's most likely that we could see some problems in the future, and that's what we need to do going forward with this contract. We have, as part of all of this, we're looking at transient pressures within the system. Those instances where we may see instantaneous changes in pressure, which we think led to the original break, that leads us to looking at the operations of Hess Pump Station, as well as the overall operations of our distribution system itself, all of which will be included with this contract going forward. In order to complete the additional modeling efforts and vulnerability analysis, the cost cap previously established for Burns &amp; McDonald's under the on-call contract will need to be increased, although the annual cost cap would not require adjustment. Design and construction of any additional repairs identified in the condition assessment will be solicited through a formal public solicitation process, meaning anything that might come out of this effort moving forward would go through a formal solicitation. The cost of work associated with the initial analysis was $50,000. The estimated cost of additional modeling is $303,000, bringing the total contract to $353,000. Funding is available in the 2022 Distribution Main Replacement Program. Staff recommend City Council approve the revised task order cost cap within the on-call contract previously approved and authorize the necessary signatures. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Gary. Just want to follow up. I can't remember if it was a thought you might have had at the time, but someone had mentioned that one of the reasons that pipe could have burst was potentially corrosive salt from the highway. Did we find an answer to that?
So we looked into that. That was the first thing that we looked into because there was a belief that maybe from the sand and salt from KDOT going down the slope to that ditch might have created some corrosivity issues within the soil. We did not find a direct correlation of that with the testing that we did. That doesn't mean that it's not there, but it didn't look to be a real telling issue. There also was some cathodic protection for a gas line in the area that could potentially cause some issues. We have since worked with Kansas Gas Service, and they're going to remove that cathodic protection system from that area so it's not in direct, basically, parallel to this water main, so that we just remove that potentially. But we did take a close look at that. The internal testing that we did with this pipe, there's a, one particular company that does this, and they have a pretty exhaustive effort where they follow up with an engineering analysis. They do electromagnetic testing from the inside of the pipe, and they were able to tell this particular pipe has got a steel casing inside of it and wire bands around it that create the reinforcing for the pipe. They were able to tell where those wire bands were no longer in good shape. They had deteriorated, they were broken. Really interesting process. It's something that we want to utilize going forward that we think is really one of the best ways to identify where our risks are. So we did not come to a conclusion that it was a corrosivity issue from what we originally talked about, but in the process, we found a way that we think we can really identify the problems within these pipes regardless of what caused the issue.
Awesome. Thank you. Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the revised task order cost cap within the on-call contract previously approved and authorize the necessary signature, signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll up and roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
A229 Jerome Smarsh Revocable Trust and Thomas J. Smarsh requests the land annexation of land generally located on the south side of West 21st Street North and within one-half mile west of North 151st Street West.
Welcome.
Good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today first because it is an island annexation, and state statutes require that a resolution be sent from the city to the county requesting that the Board of County Commissioners find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth or development, and, number two, because this provides an opportunity for public comment on the process. So again, this is an annexation case. This is not a zoning case, which planning typically presents to you. So about this request, the applicants are requesting annexation, and that annexation would be an island annexation because this property does not touch the existing city, Wichita City limits. Subject site is located approximately a half a mile to the west of the Wichita City limits, and you can see here on this map, the subject site is in green and the kind of brown, tan colors, the city of Wichita City limits. Subject site is located southwest corner of 21st Street and 151st. It is currently zoned rural residential and developed as a farm with land in agricultural use. The applicants have also submitted a rezoning. Again, we're here talking about the annexation, but they've submitted a rezoning request to Cedric County. That request is to rezone the property in order to allow for development of duplexes and some limited commercial uses. Zone change request is scheduled to be considered by the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. tomorrow. If the zone change is approved, as recommended by the Planning Commission, then there is a condition that the zone change would not take effect until the property is annexed by the city of Wichita. So in terms of context, the majority of the properties surrounding the subject site are zoned rural residential and in agricultural use. To the east, and really east-southeast, you can see them right here, are properties that are zoned SF20 and in use for large lot, single-family residences. And then to the north and to the west, you can see this property along here, this is a property that is owned by the Kansas Department of Transportation for future development as the Northwest Bypass. Staff report for this item provides a review of a number of different services and the ability of the city to provide them to the subject site upon annexation. The review included water service, sewer service, stormwater, streets, police, fire, and parks. I'm not gonna go in depth about those, but we'll just highlight that they're in the staff report. In terms of community plans, subject site is within the Wichita 2035 Urban Growth Area, as shown in the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. In terms of financial considerations, staff estimate that the property is currently developed would result in approximately $896 in annual city tax revenues and approximately $355,000, $355,000 in annual city tax revenues if developed as the applicant is currently proposing. Future capital maintenance and operation costs for the city of Wichita infrastructure and services are unknown at this time. In terms of council action, it is recommended that the city initiate the annexation process and adopt the resolution. And again, just a quick process note, this is an annexation case, not a zoning item, and so it is recommended that the city council take public comment on this item. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and then stand for any questions. So you can see here, the subject site is indicated in green. This is a map that shows quite a few things, but you can, stormwater, conduit, sewer lines, water lines, and the Wichita City Limits. So you can see there's approximately about a half-mile gap there. This is, actually from the zone change application, again, just to give you some background on that, that is being considered by the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners tomorrow. In terms of plating, plat has not been submitted for this property, but you can see right now the conceptual layout that's being proposed. You can see the LC area they're proposing up in the corner. Now, one of the things, a question that did come up, that, just prior to the presentation, was a question about why is this property an island in terms of annexation? And one of the reasons is because the property immediately to the east, you can see this creek that flows through it, so it's significant floodplain areas immediately to the east. And that was based on review, conversations with the applicant, review of the floodplain map. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Input from the public on this item? Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Chris Bone with Garver, 1995 Midfield Road here in Wichita, agent for the applicant. I just wanted to reinforce a few things that Scott mentioned in his staff report. I thought it had a slide in the deck, but apparently it didn't make it, and he did point out that the property to the east is largely floodplain. So right by St. Teresa's Hospital, adjacent to it, is an 18-inch City of Wichita sewer main, and it will eventually extend through this property. So this is a, a much more desirable piece of property to look at the extension of that sanitary sewer because of the lack of floodplain there and the yield you could get on residential homes in that area. Similarly, that 24-inch water line is parked right at the intersection of 151st and 21st, and it's been sized and is available to, to provide the service needs for this piece of ground. That property will abut the K96, or the K96, it's the Northwest Bypass, but an extension of K96 that's proposed by KDOT and their future advanced plans. And if you think about the area in northeast Wichita around K96, where Oliver, Woodlawn, Rock, some of those areas, there's a lot of mixed housing that's been developed along that corridor adjacent to that right-of-way. And another interesting idea is that that, that K96 on the east side of town's been around for about 30 years now. It's four-lane, it's going to six-lane here over the next few years. So you can see the remarkable growth that's been accomplished by that new facility in northeast Wichita. We envision that here. Like we said, it's not a zone change, so it's a little bit different, but it makes sense logistically that this would be part of the city of Wichita, and if you look at the comprehensive plan, it's obviously part of the, the future plan for Wichita. So I just wanted to point those things out. The Renwick School District has been contacted, they are fully happy that they could have new students that are generated from the development of this area, and we have some support from adjacent property owners to the west. Some of that will be with the zone change case tomorrow at Sedgwick County. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions at this time? See none, thank you.
Thank you.
Further input? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench, is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Frye, as this resides in District 5.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate this opportunity to continue to add to the future growth for Wichita. I think Chris said it well, with the Northwest Bypass potential and what happened out with northeast and K96, we can hopefully anticipate similar type of growth northwest. So with that, I make the motion that we initiate the annexation process and adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll, members cast their vote. Ever receives six yeas votes to one nay vote, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
CUP 2022-30, minor amendment request in the city to CUP DP-12 to allow entertainment, nightclub in the city, associated with restaurants and limited commercial zoning, generally located on the south side of East Douglas and within one-quarter mile west of South Rock Road, 7607 and 7703 East Douglas Avenue.
Welcome back.
Good morning. Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because the DAB and the Planning Commission have slightly different recommendations. The application is for the following. The applicant is looking for an amendment to an existing community unit plan on this site, and you can see that the site consists of two restaurant spaces at the north end of Town East, in order to allow for the combination of alcohol and entertainment, which is defined as nightclub in the city per the Unified Zoning Code. This would also allow a number of uses, including tavern and drinking establishment, entertainment establishment, and event center. So not only could they have alcohol and entertainment, but they could also host events at these restaurant locations. So about the properties, as we've mentioned, they're located at Town East Mall, which is generally southwest, the intersection of Douglas and Rock. Site is zoned LC Limited Commercial and contained within a larger community unit plan. Subject site for this application consists of, again, the two parcels, one of which is vacant, I think most recently it was maybe like Chinese food restaurant, it's vacant now. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they're requesting this in order to allow for the additional uses at the restaurant sites, generally entertainment, alcohol, and hosting events. In terms of context, properties to the north of the subject site are zoned SF5 and developed as a single-family residential. Properties to the south are zoned LC Limited Commercial within the CUP and developed as a mall and parking lot. Properties to the east are the same, and then properties to the west are zoned LC Limited Commercial within the CUP and developed as parking lots. In terms of review, the public hearing for this item was held on July 21st at the Planning Commission. Planning Commission voted to approve the application 11 to 1, subject to the applicant's revised language that was submitted prior, just prior to the MAPC meeting and is described in the staff report. No members of the public spoke at the public hearing, but the applicant's revision included revisions to the hours of operation to make it so that it's until 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and midnight on Friday and Saturday. On August 8th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended approval 7-0, subject to staff recommendation. The DAB 2 recommended language is included in the agenda report and is the same as the staff recommendation. No members of the public spoke at this public hearing, the staff recommendation included hours of operation from, to 10:00, Sunday through Thursday, and midnight on Friday and Saturday. So, in essence, that is where you're seeing the differences, the hours and how late it could operate. But, there's more. After the DAB 2 meeting, the applicant submitted additional revised language for consideration and approval, which is attached to the staff report, and the biggest change, again, would be to allow for outdoor activities later than what was in the initial actions by the Planning Commission and the DAB, and would also regulate the indoor recreation and entertainment so that it would be governed really by the hours that are set in the city code for bars and drinking establishments. So, wouldn't be able to operate any later with that entertainment, would have to close at the same time. No protest petitions were received for the requested CUP amendment, and so the council, in terms of council action, it's the Planning Commission, it is recommended the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested CUP amendment with conditions, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the resolution. This would require a simple majority of four out of seven votes. Now, there are a number of different alternatives based on the different language that has come up with this case. So you can override the MAPC recommendation and approve per the DAB recommendation. This would require five of seven votes, because it's an override in the MAPC. You can also override the MAPC recommendation, adopt alternative findings, and approve the request, subject to the revised language submitted by the applicant and described in the staff report. This again would require five of seven votes. You can override the MAPC recommendation, adopt alternate findings and deny it, again, five of seven, or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which would require four of seven votes. And then a note on the process, again, this is a zoning case, so the public hearing for this item occurred at the Planning Commission, and so city council policy is to not typically receive public comments on zoning items. And with that, I'll pause for a second, I'm gonna take you through the images and graphics and then stand for questions. So here's a map of the zoning, you can see primarily commercial in the area with single-family to the north. This is from the future growth concept map showing new employment is recommended. This is the graphic from the CUP identifying the two parcels, 13 and 14 up at the top. This was the protest area, and again, no protests were received for this case. So this is the restaurant, DOMA, that's open at the site. And this is the outdoor space that you can see where they would have some entertainment and games. This is the restaurant that's currently vacant to the west. Single-family homes to the north. Mall to the south. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Since this is a MAPC item, we will not open up to public questions this time, so therefore discussion is back at the bench. Councilmember, this resides in District 2. Apologies, I had to double-check that. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you to planning staff and to legal for helping walk through this. Just want to make sure, there's a very, very small technicality, but I just want to make sure that we get it right and that everybody has the same language and the same intent. And so with that, I would move that we return the case back to the MAPC for additional consideration of the revised language submitted by the applicant after the District Advisory Board meeting and then MAPC meetings.
I'll second the motion. Clerk will open her roll, members cast their vote. Ever receives seven yeas votes, that motion does pass, the item will be sent back. Madam Clerk.
Zone 2022-30, zone change request in the city from LC Limited Commercial to GC General Commercial for property located on the east side of South Broadway Avenue, 400 feet north of East Harry Street, 1528 South Broadway.
Good morning again, Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. This item is being presented today because the DAB and Planning Commission have different recommendations. The Planning Commission recommended approval, the DAB recommended denial. I'll explain a little bit about that in the presentation. So the applicant is indicated that they're requesting the rezoning in order to be able to operate an auto body shop at the site. Here you can see the site located along Broadway. This would require GC zoning instead of the LC zoning that they currently have. Again, it's located on the east side of Broadway, generally northeast of the intersection of Broadway and Harry. The site is zoned LC and developed and in use as an auto body, as, sorry, an auto repair shop. Property to the north is under the same ownership and is zoned LC Limited Commercial and developed with a parking lot. In 2002, conditional use was approved permitting outdoor vehicle and equipment sales at that site. Property to the south is in the same condition as the one to the north. Properties to the east are zoned TF3, two-family residential and developed with single-family residences, you can see them on the aerial here. Properties to the east, I'm sorry, to the west, zoned LC Limited Commercial and developed with vacant, commercial retail building. And in 2019, a conditional use was approved that would permit outdoor vehicle sales at this site, but was restricted to three years unless extended, so we do not have that extension on file to date. In terms of review, the public hearing for this case was held at the Planning Commission on July 21st. The MAPC recommended a move to approve the application per the staff recommendations, 12 to 0. No one from the public spoke in opposition at the public meeting. On August 3rd, District Advisory Board 3 reviewed the request and recommended denial, 7, 1, with one abstention. There were concerns from the DAB members regarding fumes and odor in proximity to the adjacent residential properties to the east. Neither the applicant or an agent for the applicant attended the DAB meeting. No members of the public spoke on this item. No protest petitions were received for the requested zone change, and the request can be approved by a simple majority of four of seven votes. In terms of council action, it is recommended the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. Again, this requires a simple majority of four or seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change in accordance with the DAB recommendation, which would require five of seven votes, or you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. This would require a simple majority of four of seven votes. And in terms of process, again, this is a zoning item, so the public hearing was held at the Planning Commission. And I will take you through some of the graphics real quick. So here's the aerial, here's the zoning for the site, you can see primarily commercial along Broadway residential to the east. Here's the map from the Comprehensive Plan showing commercials, the recommended use. Here's the protest area map, showing no protests in the area. Here are photos from the site, this is the existing structure in use for auto repair. This is looking to the east where the residences are, looking at the lot to the south, the commercial structure, it's vacant across the street. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. We'll open up for discussion at the bench, starting with Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. On issues like this, I'm just gonna side with the DAB most of the time. This one, I, I do wish it would have shown up at the, the DAB meeting to alleviate any concerns. Unfortunately, they didn't, and there were a lot of questions pertaining to it. So I would like to move to defer this until the November 1st meeting, so I have a chance to return it to DAB and see if we can get them to show up to answer questions this time around.
And just, motion has been made, it hasn't been seconded yet, but I am just curious, the concern was that...
A lot of the concern was how it fit into the South Central Neighborhood Plan. There were concerns about, because they were talking about doing auto body painting, whether or not there were going to be screens to contain that, fumes from the area, and again, these are things that probably could be addressed if we can get the applicant to show up and alleviate any concerns at DAB, so. show up and alleviate any concerns at DAB. So I'm more just giving them a second chance to actually show up this time and address their concern because I hate turning down somebody after they've paid, I think it's $1,200, the application fee for a zoning change. So I just want to give them a second chance to come and talk to DAB and alleviate any concerns.
And I think that's a smart move moving forward. I used to work in auto body. These are pretty modern. Usually if you're creating a paint booth, you're not smelling it down the road. Like, these are really pretty modern chemicals, and people know what they're doing. I think it's not as much of a hazard. So I'm just wondering if perhaps we could get not just the folks here, but if there is a third-party auto body expert who might be able to talk about this, that might be helpful as well. We want the DAB to feel comfortable moving forward with this if they do, and to alleviate any fears if those fears aren't as prevalent as those might think.
Right. At least have all the information before we really move on it.
Very good. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to offer my colleague a friendly amendment to specify that it goes to DAB.
So the motion would be, I move to defer this to the November 1st meeting and return this to DAB for the October meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receives seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments?
Comments or board appointments? Let's start off with board appointments at this time. Vice Mayor Tuttle?
Thank you. I have two appointments, and I can make sure that I get this sent to the clerk. But for the Billy McCray naming opportunity, Cynthia Burner, and for the Affordable Housing Review Board, Brad Sharp. I'm sorry, Brad Snap. My bad. Brad Snap. Thank you.
All right. Is any more appointments at this time? Get a bunch in. If not, I'll make a motion to accept the appointments. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receives seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Back on comments. At this point, though it's not on the agenda for some reason, I will make a motion to approve the travel expenses for the mayor to attend the League of Kansas Municipalities governing body meeting, which is September 8th through the 9th in Ellis, Kansas. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote. Ever receives seven yea votes, that motion does pass. We are now back on comments for the good of the group. Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for supporting, giving Representative Finney the key to the city. The family and friends and community, we're definitely appreciative of that effort. And then, Bob, I've had two entrepreneurs reach out, and this might be a conversation to have with purchasing, but both of them have kind of mentioned that when they go through the bid process, the city is not willing to pay them anything worth bidding. And if they're not, they're looking at bigger companies, and they can drop their bids low enough to where they can get work from the city. I can give you those names afterwards. I haven't, this was said to me in passing, and I just said I would bring it up and see if we could look at what that is.
Further comments? Councilmember Ballard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to remind anybody that is interested, tomorrow we have our public meeting at 6:00 at the Workforce Center to go over any last-minute questions or concerns regarding the Amadon Bridge Project.
Further comments or announcements for the good of the group? See none. With that, I'll make a motion, the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive information on a civil lawsuit pursuant to KSA 754319 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, and to receive legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege in the public interest. With that, I will make a motion at this meeting's start at 11:45, and we will resume back 20 minutes later in the chamber at 12:05. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote with enthusiasm. All right. Ever receives seven yea votes, we will be recess into executive session at 11:45. Thank you.